There you go.
We're ready whenever you are, Derek.
Okay.
I'm stuck.
Six o'clock, call me in the order. Uh, we have open meetings, acts posted on the wall in the back. Anthony, would you take a roll?
Yes. Holly. Buckminster.
Here.
Rob.
Here.
Wisdom. Ferguson.
Here.
Ratcliffe.
Here.
Foraker. Layden.
Here. Please rise.
Where are you guys?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands what our nation under God in its own liberty and justice for all.
Since Mayor's not here, there's no mayor's report, uh, city administrator's report.
Yeah, so I'll go over a few components, provided the June monthly administrative report within the council agenda. Uh, reminder for, uh, two thousand twenty-three DTR grant applications. Those can be attained from the Chamber of Commerce office and are due around July fifteenth. For those grant applications. Uh, we're working with Send and the Fall City Career District on that fifteen oh six Stone Streets, uh, park or essentially the lots up there. So we're working on getting some submittals out, uh, on, let's see, on Sunday, I submitted the, a grant to Walter Scott Foundation, uh, requesting some money and we were working with Send to get another grant out to, uh, DD. So you'll see that coming before, uh, council for that actual full submittal. And then if we get to the next stage with the Walter Scott, they'll do their initial review, then it'll come before council if we're asked to go through their phase two. Just to give everyone a heads up for that. Uh, down at the ballparks, we got the sidewalks, have the handrails installed to F and M and, uh, apartment field. So that got completed just in time for ball to be done, unfortunately. Uh, want to take Fast Global Solutions for that. They donated, um, actually the powder coating. Uh, we contracted with Fall City Customs to do the rails, but Fast Global donated all the powder coating, just like they have with the in the back of one of our picnic tables and I'm gonna thank them. Uh, we did have some damage down at Grandview Park over, I think it was the other weekend. About two grand in damage, all the, all the toilets were blown up. So from fireworks or something, but SCPD didn't investigate and didn't make an arrest on that. We will seek restitution for that item. Um, let's see here. New hires, we did hire a few more seasonal employees, one out of the pool, uh, two for cemetery. Our seasonal ones, we had for the cemetery, uh, didn't like all the weed eating, so we got some new staff out there. Uh, regarding public safety, the grant for the eighteen seventeen and a half stone, the grant to do that demolition, we did get notice received from the state, uh, for that. So that's gonna be getting discussed forward by, Building Inspector Blake, Buckminster. Hopefully here in the next month, we have that, we'll have that buttoned up and by the end of August, uh, close out that ground. Completely finished. Uh, speaking of additional grants, the natural gas distribution, infrastructure, safety and modernization grant. Wordful, mouthful. Uh, we got that submitted. Uh, that project ended up totaling nine point five million. So we're making that request, uh, which nine point four is, uh, actually underground work and the rest is some equipment components. Uh, Trevor, probably works director also submitted along with, we have contracted with Ferris Engineering. Uh, they submitted another eight hundred fifty thousand dollar grant for the, uh, grid resiliency project, uh, which essentially would be taking in some of the old sixty year wood- wooden structures and outdated components and get them underground. Uh, kind of the next stage, uh, with this first underground project, this would be a, a secondary stage to get into. Some of our most vulnerable components anyways. The, uh, sports, or the multi-sports court down at Tindemverda. Asphalt got laid for that and I think the courts are getting laid out, or we're getting laid out by Parks groups putting those in. And where do we installing the pickleball courts, nets and basketball hoops here yet this month. And we had a kickoff meeting today actually for the pavement rehab job out at the airport. So that's gonna be commencing here, July eighth. Get that project going.
Questions?
Always something going on.
All right, we'll move on to the, uh, Chief of Police Report. Do you have anything?
Okay.
All right. Under the consent agenda, we have minutes approval for June seventeen twenty twenty-four, agenda approval, claimed approval for June eight twenty-four through June twenty-first twenty twenty-four. And the consent agenda, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Vote.
There we go. Five days.
Moving on to old business, discussion and action, resolution authorizing for execution of memorandum of understanding with Richardson County for the transfer of nine one one calls to a secondary public safety entry report.
All right, so we'll give a brief update on this. So, um, resolution is the exact same, it was came before council the last couple of meetings. The MOU, uh, same terms, same language within that, exclusive of the start date. Do the plan to be July eighth start date rather than the original plan to August one start date. So with passage of this, we'll get that process going and make sure, um, everyone's trained up on our end and transfers and everything's working with, uh, with the sheriff's, uh, best, but consul. You guys want to speak to us or anything? Uh, did you, or Ashley, did you see, uh, Chief Baker had asked if you had, if your circle like up and running by July eighth? Or can we test it prior to that July eighth?
Um, we can test it anytime. Mine did email him back. I don't know if he just didn't listen to it.
Yeah, he's in the office right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Approve. Second.
All vote?
Five days.
Moving on to regular business, public hearing, application for class C liquor license by Frederick Spirits LLC for twenty-six oh two Harlem Street. Meetings being opened at June, or on, sorry, it's, uh, six oh seven. Does anybody like to comment on public hearing? I'm nobody speak, we'll close the public hearing at six oh seven. Number three, discussion and action, application for class C liquor license by Frederick Spirits LLC at twenty-six oh two Harlem Street.
All right, so we did the, put the publications out, uh, we had no public comments, um, or within the time period of that, and then we also have the public hearing that we just held for, for the short time that we had there. Uh, so we have nothing contesting it. Essentially there's, or was an existing liquor license there and just goes into transfership to the new, new owner. So fairly easy, um, as far as the process there. Nothing new that's being done, it's just a transfer. Growlers, well, they might have something to ask you. I mean, a new in it, or new facility. Sorry, part of the secondary license.
Yep.
I'll say it.
All vote?
Five days.
Item number four, discussion and action, city participation in Fall City High School, uh, Fall City Career Academy work-based learning program for Fall City Public Schools.
Yeah, for Donnie, will it come up?
Yep. So, I'm Jack Baker, I'm the Career Credit Academy Director at Fall City Public Schools.
Go ahead, Fall City Public Schools, in charge of, director of work-based learning.
And we reached out to the city, um, let me just take a step back. We, we, we're putting in five new pathways in conjunction with Southeast Community College. They'll deal with welding, agriculture, uh, nursing and construction and education. All right, so students are gonna be able to take college classes in those areas, hopefully get those college cap, well, they will get those college classes at a reduced rate. And one of the things that we want to do at the school is we continue to kind of move Fall City High into, you know, where we need to be in terms of college accrual, credit accrual, is getting them work-based learning opportunities. And we see the city as a partner with us in doing that. Um, in construction especially, I've talked to Anthony a little bit about that. Um, Anthony's actually gonna sit on our advisory board along with Blake Buckminster. We asked Blake to sit on it because he's the building inspector and he deals with all the different, uh, construction people in town. So we thought he'd be an excellent one that could kind of tell us, hey, this is maybe an area you should focus in, um, things like that. So we, we would like to be able to place students, um, with the city if they have a career interest, um, in something the city does. So for example, with Blake, if they're in construction, the construction academy, um, we could pair it, a student up with Blake to go around and do the inspections with him and they could see how that works on the backend. Um, I talked to Anthony a little bit about working with the street department, the gas department. Overall, we feel like this program is, is really bigger than Fall City High. It's more about finding the next generation of workers for our community and keeping people in town in good paid jobs. And I'll let Donnie speak a little bit about the work-based learning class, because it's not like we're just gonna say, hey, you know, Donnie, you go and you work with the gas department. There's a process that will go into that.
Yeah, we're, we're basically looking into getting a curriculum from a lady from Iowa that will basically go through a, uh, basically ten week cla- well, nine week class with me, where I teach them all about the interview process, how to dress, um, but everything they need to go out and do the job.
Keep a job.
Keep a job. But, you know, basically we haven't seen that yet. We just talked this morning a little bit. We're hoping that we have something in our hands to, you know.
I think in your handout too, it goes a little more in depth. We have three levels of, of students that'll be working. I'm mainly dealing with the level three students who are on a college pathway. Um, another one that, that could possibly be there, but legally we don't know is, we actually have online criminal justice classes that kids can take. And so partnering with the police department or the sheriff's department, um, is, is something that would be really cool if we could figure out how to make it work legally. Um, there's some issues with that. But really, the, the sky's the limit. And like I said, I think we believe it's, it's a win-win for our students. Cause now they're not sitting in school studying things that maybe they don't really care about when they've got all their credits done to graduate. Now we get them out doing real stuff. Um, and, and it motivates them to pass their classes, because they know that when they're a twelfth grader, eleventh grader, they can go out and start doing things that interest them and hopefully get into a career and stay here in Fall City. Um, but the level one kind of work is mainly just teaching kids. Uh, one of the things we tell people, we can't assume anymore that kids know how to get a job or keep a job. I will tell you, I've met with a bunch of employers here in town and they, it, it basically it could be a recording. They tell me the same thing. We don't care how much they know. We want to know, number one, will they show up every day on time? And number two, can they get along with their coworkers? They're like, everything else is negotiable, we can, we can do. And so we feel like there's a need there. We're gonna have to step in and maybe train kids and things that some of us don't program. Um, because that is a problem and we have a workforce problem. You all know that. We know it at the school. Um, and so hopefully this is a solution, um, for all of us.
I think also when we, when we look at, you know, like the city, hospital, we're basically tier three with you guys. I mean, we're not gonna send you some kid that's, you know, never had a job. I mean, we're basically looking at the kids that know Dr. Work.
Or they want experience, you know, like, uh, Anthony says, you know, we're having trouble finding electrical, you know, people to work on electric lines in Fall City. I meet with all the students at the high school, I can start throwing that out there. Hey, have you ever thought about this career and if they're interested? Maybe you can work together and set up some sort of like job shadow or kind of shit. So it's very targeted. It's not like we're just like, throw it on a sheet. We, we're gonna meet with them every semester and talk about, because kids change, you know, and, and things like that. So hopefully it'll be pretty well run. You guys have any questions for us?
Oh, a couple of questions. I love this, first of all. Um, and I think that the city would be a really great, like, employer to be a, a participant in this. Um, logistically, so it's unlikely that there, the, this program already exists, we're just bringing it to Fall City. Um, I think my, a couple of questions are, do we need to get a city attorney involved when it comes to things like liability waivers and things like that? And the more like manual, like work jobs, what does that look like to you all now?
So I can tell you, uh, I've been to a couple of conferences, this, this, a lot of, a lot of places are doing this now. Basically our understanding, and this is something that we'd have to work with each group that cooperates with us. But generally what happens is when this student goes out during school hours, they follow under our liability insurance. Because they're with us. It'd be like if they went on a field trip to Van Tech during school, they're, they're under us. So Donnie actually supervises it. Now here's where it gets a little, little tricky, and this is what will happen, and it's already happening with a few of the kids that have been out. Let's say they're out and they're doing this apprenticeship during the school day for two hours. The employer really likes it, they want to hire. So now they start working there and they become an employee. Well, then the employer just treats them like they would any new hire. So like your seasonal help, I'm sure you have some high school kids probably doing seasonal help. Oh, my son, I guess he's working at the pool. So I mean, he's not necessarily in the school, he's, he's under you guys. So if you went that route, and one of the things that we tell everybody is, we do not want to be a problem for you. Like, let's say, Donnie didn't say this, but they, they finished Donnie's class, they come in and let's say they want to follow Blake around. Blake gets to meet him and he gets to decide if that's a good match. Now, we would never say, make Blake say, you know, you know what, kid, I don't think this is a good match. He's gonna tell Donnie that, that we go back and work with those students on those skills. Um, we never want to put any of our, uh, partners in a bad spot with kids. Let, let us do it. Because the idea is even, even if they're not where they're, where they need to be to come work with y'all, we need to train them up. And so that's kind of our, our goal. So that's a long answer to a short question.
No, that's great. Thank you.
I wondered about how we finalize, like, I mean, we're in a, it's like, we put this as an action item to say, you know, likely in participation in this, but is that put through as like an interlocal agreements to really define those components or how that's?
Honestly, it really depends on you all for us. They sign up for the class and you tell us what you need from us. I mean, because we, we're, we're good. We, we've done this with other businesses. I think what's different, you may have heard of work-based learning, that, what they call it, uh, with Wendell? Was, uh, work experience, I think it was. Maybe go stop shelves or something like that. This is gonna be a lot more formalized because of the class, because of all this other stuff. But legally, it's basically like, is it any, are you under any sort of liability by allowing them to follow? So like, like the, like Fast or some of these other, uh, bigger companies, they'll have to do a safety test, things like that, even to, to job shadow. But each one is different. True Ag may not have anything. It might just be they go out and, and they go and just are, are apprenticing and they're under us. So I think really, you all tell us what you need from us, we'll get it for you, but, and we can tell you what our coverage is. Um, but that's the number one thing, I think, is just making sure that your attorney knows and that it's okay. And then what things you can allow them to do. Uh, that's the other thing.
We could probably just do an MOU, couldn't we?
Yeah, you know, MOU or basic interlocal, those are two political circumstances.
Since you guys are, yeah, since you guys are, like, have a board and stuff, you're gonna be different than a private business. They don't necessarily have to have an interlocal agreement.
But this is mostly probably just like safety, right? Cause it's not like healthcare where you have HIPAA privacy or, you know, banking and financial where you can't really.
Yeah, and if they go out with the line crews, they'll need hard hats, they'll coat shoes.
And it is like a.
What's the liability with the, what the health or the, the wellbeing of a worker?
And how much they can do. You know, I think that's the question you kind of ask, ask your managers in each department, what can they do safely? Then with your lawyers, you know, obviously you gotta, because electricity, obviously, but gas is a big one. Um, if it was something like just going with Blake to do an inspection, probably not as big of a deal, because they're going around.
How do we handle now with our part-time? Is our part-time people running weed eaters and, and working for the street department or seasonal help? Do we have something like that in black and white with?
Well, maybe actually employees.
Yeah, I suppose that's true, but they're trying to get them so they're not at risk in case they're out on the job site and something happens.
But they fall under the city, it's, or not city, the schools liability.
The school, right.
If it's through the school.
And that would probably cover like, um, even like transportation, like if they're in a car on the way there, like that's the schools.
And most of the time we bring them. So if they have, if they don't have a car, Donnie.
Yeah.
A transport. So that's even.
Did you say that there's like a, um, like a, a contact or like a, like an actual organization that you all work with or through the conferences that you've attended? I kind of want to see if there's any other communities that are relatively similar to ours that have implemented this and what their agreement with the schools looks like. So that would maybe there's like a precedent or how other communities have handled that.
We can reach out. Go ahead.
So June third to the fifth, we were in a conference at Carney and I sat in on a speaker and there's three ladies from Sidney, Nebraska High School. And they're number two biggest people they reach out to, hospital and the city.
Okay.
So I can try to dig up some information.
Yeah, yeah, if there's some.
Lincoln Public Schools, Lincoln Public Schools have been doing this for a couple of years now, because they've even increased it more. I mean, they have a student body of four or five hundred.
I think what's a little different for us, you know, like in Lincoln, there's enough businesses, right? Most of them can like specialize, but for us, I mean, we're, we're lucky in Fall City. We do have a fairly diverse group of businesses.
But you're just.
Yeah. And, and the city is a little different. I mean, people that would use. Municipalities as, as job placement would be probably unique to a smaller town, so.
Yeah, I'd love to see if there's some kind of, yeah, if there's other theories, if there's some kind of like written agreement or something, I'd love to see that, just so that we can kind of see, like I said, how other communities have handled it, make sure we don't miss something and yeah, to make sure that if we run a high city attorney, that it's good to go, so we have something to start with.
And the last thing I'll say on, on this, everything that we're doing now is building towards school year twenty-five, twenty-six. We do have, what is it, twenty?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one students, the majority of whom are probably on, in level one, as you read that paper for this year. But it's basically operating under the way it's been run in the past. So really, our, our goal is we're reorganizing the whole high school into career pathways. So students ninth and tenth grade get to try all kinds of different things and then start to specialize in eleventh and twelfth. And if it requires post-secondary education, they can take as many of those college credits here as possible. And then this piece, this work-based learning gets hooked onto it, because we don't want somebody going off and studying something and they hate it when they actually get in the field. Um, and, and here's the other thing too, I think a lot of people don't realize this, in high school, you, you graduate based on credits, it's not years. So basically, a lot of our kids could be done at the end of their junior year, but we make them sit in school all day. And so for a lot of them, it's just a waste. So we're trying to get them doing things, rather than being in daycare for eighteen-year-olds, doing things that are realistic. Either taking more college classes if you're on a four-year path, or if we have these opportunities to be out in the workforce and everywhere you want to be in and take college classes, do that, or just be in the workforce. Um, so it's kind of the mind, uh, what do you call it, paradigm shift for, for our town, because it is a little different.
You might have a great idea.
I love it. I would support, I guess, since we probably do require some kind of action, um, I would make a motion to, for the city to move forward with with, with pursuing this, um, you know, and hopefully, not, not contingent to one, but yeah, if y'all, if y'all can make a decision.
So we, we will, we will, we do.
Yes, however, that sounds nice and emotion, I'm happy with it.
We could just, uh, city pursue an agreement with Fall City, uh, the Fall City Career Academy.
And Anthony, can we just send you what we, what we dig up for you? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, send it to me on.
I'll second the motion, whatever it was.
All vote?
Five days.
Thanks, guys, for coming in.
You bet.
Item number five, discussion and action, lighting improvements for S and C Field at the Fielder Family Ball Complex by Fall City Rec. I actually submitted this, um, agenda item, uh, but I don't have as much information as Corey Hepper does, so I'd like to have Corey Hepper stand, step forward. He is the, um, Fall City Rec Baseball Director and then also the High School Baseball Coach. So please introduce yourself.
Uh, thanks, guys. Derek said we had a couple of recent incidents. We hosted our, um, our conference area turn, or conference tournament for our juniors, our division, and we ran in about a forty-minute delay, um, last Tuesday, Thursday, because we had several lights that were coming on around, especially around home plate. And with safety issues, it gets really dark around there then, we couldn't be able to see, so we tried resetting them. Normally, that's worked in the past for me when I've had issues. Um, whether we just reset the breaker or we shut the entire, um, component off and just wait usually ten, fifteen minutes, it works. Didn't work this time. Um, we've had some issues, um, this year especially, last year a little bit more, um, with, you know, lights being out. Usually the city's really great. I just communicate with Randy. Randy gets to, to the electrical guys, you know, they're usually there, um, getting lights fixed where we need to. Uh, but it definitely seems like we've had more happening with those poles, and I think a lot of those are still original, um, ones from when we redid a lot of the stuff. Um, because we didn't necessarily do a lot of the lights, just the, the complex itself. Um, we did have to cut a, our second game short on Wednesday last week with Wathena, um, because again, they weren't coming on. Um, we stood there and watched and Derek kind of tested it too. We, the same couple were, three were out, uh, out of the five, right there, um, on the third base side right by, and then another two out of the five on the first base side. You had at least one out on probably every pole in the outfield, a couple on the sides. Um, with that size of the field, once you get too many out, I mean, it gets pretty dark. And we have had definitely more this year than in the past with teams even talking about, and it doesn't seem very lit up, even when you maybe have most of the lights going, what we've had. Um, so again, that goes back to the safety issue too with the kids. And we tried again, reset and we waited around like we did last time, communicating with the electrical guys, I think it was Billy and, uh, Crifle said, um, came down the first, the one night and we talked with them tonight. I kind of waited, you get all five of them on, um, they did eventually come on. And then about two minutes later, all of a sudden, they went back out, um, the outside poles, you know, you communicate to, you'd see, one would come on, the other end would go off. It's a hit and miss a lot of times. Um, and then if you don't know, you got games planned and we're playing night games. Um, we already moved our game, our last home game here with Tuesday with Sabatha, we went ahead and moved it to Sabatha, just because I don't want to run into a risk of not being able to play our second game, um, when it starts getting dark out and have that as a safety issue, um, for those kids. Cause that was kind of our discussion with the umpires, um, and his coaches last week, we decided it's, catchers couldn't see the balls, um, hitters couldn't see it, umpires couldn't see very well, it got really dark around there. So just something to kind of at least bring on the radar, I guess, that maybe needs to be, um, looked at. Doesn't seem to be as big of an issue with some of our other fields, but you're dealing with smaller fields. Um, um, we're probably used a little bit more than some of those ones are, especially for nights, um, throughout the year. Um, but when you deal with our, the bigger, um, high school beach and field there, then definitely you get a few of those out and it really changes the way things are lit up on that. So, any questions though?
I'd like to look back and see, I didn't see anything purchased in the last ten years or twenty years, so I'm sure.
Yes, were these lights original prior to?
They very well could have been.
Yeah, some of them got moved over when they put the new poles up. When they renovated, some of the lights were re, most lights were reused, I believe. It was a different bank out in the outfield, out by right field, I think that's newer. So it might be a case where it's a little bit more than just the field. I mean, we can, we can look to improve the lights for this field, but then we definitely need to have, you know, a plan in place to address the other lights too, so.
Might as well do it all the time, because then you're gonna have different dates of the last maintenance of all, you might as well just, you see about replacing all of them.
And that was my thought, is if, I mean, we can go and replace bulbs or replace whatever boxes or whatever, but then next year you're gonna have another one put out, next year. So it's be better just to put them up. And if we put LEDs up, we're gonna, longevity should be there and cost savings for the city going through. I mean, you have more upfront, but, cause I think that right now, they're those, I don't know, those ones I gotta heat up, I believe.
They're a halogen now. We did Grandview last year, switched them old LEDs, because they were having moisture issues in the, in the housings.
I know you see with a lot more of the fields now, we go to, um, obviously you can see a lot of, they added, the coach from Adams, um, he did mention that they had theirs replaced. Um, and it was a, uh, game of parks grant that they got. I'm, I'm not great with, but you guys have somebody that looks, something to consider that or communicate with.
Yeah, yeah, we could get numbers and then pursue.
Let's do that. Can we, can we make a part of the motion though, or should we, just to make sure that there's follow-up on the additional fields, maybe a motion for this? But then also have, while we're getting bids, get the bids for a ton of projects. That's what I was motion, just motion, motion all the fields and just have somebody look at it, do an update, because some of our newer, like, the softball field will be newer, because that's all new, right? That was all new. The one apartment there? Yes, I think that's all, but, yeah, but that's, all new might be what, all ten years?
Twelve years.
Before I, I've been here ten years, so.
I'll make a motion to pursue going out to bids for the entire ball complex, um, with the priority of getting your guys' in operational condition though. Appreciate that, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for your attention.
Yep. Five days.
Item number six, discussion and action, request to block off fourteen hundred block from Stone Street from five thirty to eleven fifty-nine PM on July fifth for the Richardson County Cancer Fund Benefit Dinner and Auction Event by Beth Funderschmidt, Richardson County Cancer Fund President. If it looks, she's here.
So this is the Elks event that we went through and did the special designated liquor license on. They didn't believe they needed, wanted to block off a street that time. Um, and now Rich County is asking, or the Cancer Fund is asking to block that off, so it'd just be the fourteen hundred block. The SDL stays within the parking lot of Elk, so that doesn't, doesn't move into the street or anything, but this is just. But this just blocks it off, so it's available.
Make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
All vote.
Five days.
Item number seven, discussion in action, request to use S and C Field at the Fielder Family Ball Complex on July eleventh for an outdoor movie event by Jerry Halloner, Girl Scout Troop two zero five six six. Positive thing is the lighting's not.
Well, they're lighting.
It's not working.
Pretty easy.
We still have a conference. Motion to approve.
All vote.
Five days.
Item number eight, discussion in action, change order one, Group B contract totaling two hundred twenty-five thousand, nine dollars ninety-two cents for the twenty twenty-two electrical distribution improvement project. Trevor Campbell, Public Works Director. Do you like to discuss this in all terms?
Yeah, I can touch some highlights on it. So ultimately Watts Electric's the contractor for the underground, undergrounding of a couple of our circuits, particularly around between Harlan and Chase Street and a few of those alleys from eleventh to twentieth. And they brought to our attention, they rewarded the contract for the, for that work, um, right when I came on in the, what was it, summer last year, about a year ago.
Really?
Yeah. And they mobilized here a few months ago. We proc, the city procured all the materials for the project. And, you know, upon preparing for the project, they recognized that the duct work that was specked off for the project, two-inch duct, was undersized for the three fifty MCN cabling that was specked off for the primary wires. And thus the upsize of the duct to make constructability better and future proofing better, you know, to be able, you say you were to burn up a duct, the whole intent of putting, um, each cable in a duct, so if you have one burn up for whatever reason, you can pull out that one and not have to replace all of the wires. So if you're pulling it into a tight duct, when it's, if it's tight going in, it's going to be much worse coming out, you know, twenty, thirty years, forty years down the road. So they brought to our attention, was reviewed by us, engineering, um, approved by the Board of Public Works. So we're formally bringing it to the city council.
But this change order for the, you know, the two hundred thousand, two hundred twenty-five.
So I guess I should.
That's not, we're not stuck with a bunch of leftover two-inch pipe though.
So we have, there's about twenty thousand, twenty, I don't remember the exact number, twenty, it's twenty-seven thousand feet of duct that was two-inch, that was a quarter. So yes, we do have that. There was a restocking fee of, of twenty percent, which I did not see the value in losing that money. It's two-inch duct is what we can use on other projects in town. You know, our goal is, as we've talked numerous times, is the, you know, our department bill, start focusing our own internal staff on, on trying to do some infrastructure improvements to our own systems and that two-inch duct can be utilized. I mean, it's not something we're going to use in the next two years or three years.
Not just going to sit there and occasionally just get.
You know, I mean, it can't, it can't be protected, you know, you'd be able to degrade that stuff. So we'll get it covered and, and have a supply. And we've also talked about, um, you know, if one of the boring contractors around town needs a duct and we can get the same value back out of it, great, but I don't feel like it's economical to turn around and lose twenty percent on it and sell at a discount. You know, we have value to utilize it and the whole change order, so we purchased the material difference. You know, it was like, call it thirty grand. It was twenty, I can't remember the exact footage, I would say twenty-seven thousand feet, somewhere in there. The change order is for the installation, because we, I, city purchased the two and a half inch also. So this change order is for the different size of reamers and the amount of time it's going to take to pull back, um, larger ducts.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All vote.
Go ahead. Set, put the second, yep. Five days.
If no other business comes before the council, meetings adjourned.